Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, October tenth, twenty twenty-three. Please rise for a moment of silence. Of the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson, here. Armendy?
Here.
Fishbein?
Yes, here.
Laffton?
Here.
Morone?
Here.
Tada?
Here.
Zandry?
Here.
Cervone?
Here. Uh, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept the consent agenda items A through I.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The consent agenda passes. Madam Clerk, Counselor Testa has joined us. Uh, there are no items removed for discussion from the consent agenda. Onto the public question and answer period. Mr. Gross?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. A question to the council and/or the mayor's office is, are you done with ARPA? Have you done, spent, met through all the application process? All the businesses and non-for-profits, have you finished with that process? Of pay, you know, reviewing all the applications?
I don't, I don't believe we've finished with bringing applications to the council.
So they're still out there? Do you know how many applications?
I believe so. I don't know the number.
You know when you would, they would see them all?
I, I think we have, I think the council has approved everything that's been approved by the committee. Yes, it's just, there's a few remaining that were rejected by the committee that are not approved. I shouldn't say rejected, not approved by the committee that I think need to come before us.
So if they, if they were objected by the committee, then wouldn't they come back for your standard deviation?
Something like that.
So when would that be finished then? Because will you have a final number on this at any time in the future?
It could be the next meeting.
Okay. Do you have an idea of how much money is left in the ARPA?
I, I'm not gonna guess.
Time's a ticking. Do you guys have any idea what you're gonna spend that money on? You have one year.
We, we have a series of town projects that were proposed. I'm, I'm sure we'll put it to good use.
And on all the applicants that have been done up to now, all the standard deviations have been applied? And is there paperwork for that anywhere?
I mean, I think we have minutes that reflect that the deviation was applied and they were approved. That it happened at previous meetings.
Who, did the town attorney or the town executive branch get to review those standard deviations on? Or is there paperwork for that standard deviations? Is there an Excel spreadsheet that the executive branch or the town attorney? Huh? Okay, and then the town attorney, then Counselor Allison says there's a spreadsheet then for all the profits and non, for all the for-profits and non-for-profits out there. So I can ask her for it, or if you can get it for me?
No, now that I understand what you're asking for, I don't, I mean, I'm assuming what I have a copy of is what she's talking about, so.
Okay, so it has everything, and that's what you, and then the council's approved all those. So these are the ones that have already been approved, and the only ones left are the ones that I don't even know which ones are left.
I don't know which ones are left, but there are several that were not approved by the committee that have to come back to the council.
The committee hasn't met in a few months.
That's correct.
They're just sitting there. Okay, I'm just surprised because there was such an urgency to do all these. And then if they're sitting there for months, if the businesses or, I don't even know who failed. So I don't know if it's a business, not-for-profit, or whatever. You'd think that somebody would have looked at it by now.
There's, there's just a few that have unique circumstances that only the, the council would have to make a decision on. Not many, it's only a couple.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else for public question and answer? Seeing no takers, I will close the public question and answer period. There was interest in a motion to waive Rule Five. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive Rule Five for the purposes of discussion, possible action regarding proposed agreement between the Town of Wallingford Sewer Division and Gaylord Hospital to design, construct, and fund a replacement sewer lateral approved by PUC on October three, two thousand twenty-three. So moved.
I second.
Moved, seconded by Counselor Tada. Any discussion on the motion to amend the agenda? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor Testa votes no. Uh, the motion passes. Uh, Counselor Fishbein, your item?
Yes, I do see Neil Anwake is here, and I didn't know if anybody else was prepared to answer questions. I see members of the commission as well. Nice to see you both. If you could introduce yourselves for the record, please.
Neil Anwake, General Manager for the Wallingford Water and Sewer Divisions.
Rick Hendershot, Director of Public Utilities.
Good evening, gentlemen. Um, so the first thing is, you know, the agenda item as presented is actually incorrect. Um, the agreement that was sent to us is not between the Sewer Division and Gaylord, correct? There is no agreement that's before us that was approved on October third between the Sewer Division and Gaylord.
We're all one legal entity. It's not a separate, it's the Town of Wallingford, but it's the Sewer Division project.
Actually doesn't say that either, so, but the agreement that was approved is not the Town of Wallingford. It is the commission. So the three-membered commission are one party to this contract, and Gaylord is the other, right? That's what it says. Usually, that was one of the things that piqued my interest. I've never seen an agreement where the commission itself is obligated as opposed to the division. You know, usually it's the Wallingford Electric Division, usually it's the Water Sewer Division or something like that. But this is the commission, so I don't recall ever seeing anything like that.
Well, the agreement is the Town of Wallingford by the commission. The commission, the reason why the commission is stated is because the Sewer Division in and of itself doesn't have authority to enter into this agreement without the approval of the PUC.
But have we ever done, when I've reviewed these before, I don't ever recall seeing a contract. I mean, maybe the commission has to approve on behalf of the division, right? But isn't?
On behalf of the town, the division's not a separate legal entity.
Okay, but if we look at the first paragraph, right? It says by the Public Utilities Commission.
Between the Town of Wallingford by the Public Utilities, I mean, you could say.
By the Public Utilities.
It's the Town of Wallingford. The Public Utilities Comi, if the Public Utilities Commission did not approve this, it's their policy, it's their program, so then it wouldn't have gone any further.
So when we did all of the contracts with, um, CMEC, you know, we had tons of them, right? I don't recall any of those being with the commission. It was always the Wallingford Electric Division, right?
Well, it probably should have been the Town of Wallingford, but I don't, I don't believe I ever did any of those contracts, so.
Were the Town of Wallingford through its.
Yeah, through would have been a better word, I'm sorry.
Words to that effect.
Yeah, through the Electric Division.
Yes.
Yeah, but not. Okay, so you're saying that the commission at some point has to be involved in ultimately the approval, so we'll move on from that. The, um, on the second page, it references a policy. It says the polit, and I'm looking at the second paragraph. "Policy may be modified under special cases." Then I was trying to work that into the next sentence. It talks about the policy. So is there a deviation here from the policy, therefore calling for a modification? I can't, I couldn't tell. It didn't say, you know, because this doesn't meet the policy, we need to modify. Am I missing something?
I don't think so. So the policy is a reimbursement policy. So this was a case-specific agreement that was drafted between the town vis-à-vis Public Utilities Commission vis-à-vis Sewer Division and Gaylord Hospital. It did not meet the strict approach of a reimbursement. A classic I and I reimbursement program is if you have a sump pump, rain leaders running into the sanitary sewer system. We go out, the Sewer Division goes out, excuse me, does an inspection, and we give you a violation letter. The homeowner then gets, speaks with contractors, gets quotations. Our inspectors work with the homeowners through that policy, through the process. Work is completed, homeowner submits their invoices, and then we reimburse. In this case, how we approached it with Gaylord Hospital, it is not a reimbursement policy. Or it's not, it is not a reimbursement approach, so we developed a case-specific agreement.
And is that because I, I'm, I know about the reimbursement, because I was here for, for all of that. Look, you know, this is a commercial entity. Is the reimbursement program usable for commercial entities?
Oh, it's usable for all, all entities that are connected to the sanitary sewer system. You know, we're currently working with commercial properties, we're currently working with a parochial school in town. You know, you, if you understand ninety-five point five percent of our Sewer Division customers are the classic single-family residential. That tends to be where the most of our reimbursement and where the most of our inspections are. But if you're connected to the Wallingford Sanitary Sewer Collection System, we will inspect, we will work with you.
So based upon the backup, my understanding is that through your estimations, calculations on an annual basis, there's about five, well, almost six million gallons of clean water going where it shouldn't be going. It's going into your, your sanitary line instead of regular stormwater. Is that fair?
Well, so it, it would not have an opportunity to go into the storm, into the storm drainage system because this is a, it's a lateral. So we pulled some statistics this afternoon for you. It's a two thousand two hundred seventy-nine-foot, eight-inch clay tile lateral that was installed in nineteen sixty-five and with thirteen manholes. So what's happening is we are collecting, and the predominance of the five point seven million gallons on average per year that is going into the sanitary sewer collection and treatment system is groundwater. It is, we, we split our analysis up into, and I'm gonna get technical here, and I know you guys love when I do this. We call it a dry day flow or a wet day flow. So a dry day flow is perched groundwater. Wet day flow is when we have a storm. So most of the five point seven-two is coming from uh, the dry day flow or groundwater, approximately four point seven seven three million gallons per year. The other nine hundred and sixty thousand is coming from an annual rainfall based of forty-nine point zero eight. So to go back to your original question, there isn't the opportunity to put this into the storm drainage system because it's not a storm drainage, there's no outlet to the, to the collection system. The only place it can go is further downstream into the sanitary sewer conveyance system.
So the line, the lateral that was put in nineteen sixty-five was appropriately done or not?
Yes, at that time, clay tile pipe was this, was, was the standard pipe for sanitary sewer, sewer mains as well as laterals.
So this is just replacing the existing, it is not diverting?
Can you rephrase that?
Sure. As a result of this project, will clean water be going elsewhere?
It will not be, well, elsewhere as in it will not be entering the sanitary sewer. So at this point, the, the lateral two thousand two hundred eighty feet long goes into original. We are changing the layout of it. We will now connect to the sanitary sewer in Harnish. We will be using P, SDR thirty-five PVC pipe, which is the standard. That is considered more watertight. Clay tile pipe has a seam every three feet. So take two thousand two hundred seventy-nine feet, divide by three, plus your manholes. There's a seam every three feet, plus it's clay tile. It just doesn't withstand the earthen and the overburden pressures of, of groundwater.
I think that's a different issue though, because I thought, I mean, the whole thing between the I and I is that you have water going into the sanitary sewer that is over-capaciting your system. It shouldn't be. It's, it's not in need of that service, right? So you need it to go elsewhere. Right now, almost six million gallons on an annual basis on average are going where it shouldn't be going, and that is the reason why this is having to be done. Is that fair?
Fair.
Okay. So when did it come to your attention that this was happening?
It goes back prior to when I started in two thousand sixteen. We, you know, the Sewer Division and the Engineering Section of the Water and Sewer Divisions has known that the Gaylord lateral has been a problem lateral for some time. It was not until circa, uh, when did we do our flow monitoring? So in circa two thousand twenty-two, we put two flow meters into the san, into the Gaylord lateral, one at the upstream side, one at the downstream side. That is when we got true numbers or numbers that we could support because we did the monitoring as to how much clean water was entering this lateral.
So I know when we approved the reimbursement program and all that stuff, and this council allowed public utility people to work on people's property without their permission to inspect, um, which I was, I objected to. There were penalties if they didn't fix the problem, right?
Well, so let me clarify. So we don't go onto any property unannounced. All the property inspections are done by a custom appointment. So we offer them between eight-thirty and four. You know, you're welcome to call two zero three nine four nine two six seven two.
We also discussed that when you identify a problem, like you see a, a leader that's, you know, there's a hose going in, you know, and it's obviously going into the sanitary, people won't cooperate that there are legal remedies. We talked about that.
I was not here, so.
Um, I'll move on. The, um, the permits, which is where, you know, really the thrust. And that's in paragraph, on page two. Paragraph numbered one under design. It says, "Wallingford shall be responsible for obtaining any applicable permit." So what permits would be necessary for this project?
So three permits have been identified for this project. Excuse me. The first is a water and sewer construction project. That is issued by the Water and Sewer Division's Engineering Section. That is a standard permit that our Engineering Section issues to any contractor, any property owner, um, doing work. So, and then the contractor signs that permit. The second permit identified is a street opening permit. That is a standard permit that is prepared and issued by the Town Engineering Department, and the contractor pulling that permit would be responsible for that. The third permit applicable to this project is an inland wetlands and water course permit. Um, the party responsible for preparing the permit would be the Wallingford Sewer Division. The party responsible for signing the permit would, it's a double signature. So the Sewer Division would sign as the applicant, and Gaylord Hospital would sign as the owner.
So, and, and once again, I, that was one of the confusions because it doesn't say the wa, the Water and Sewer Division, but we'll move on from that. I don't ever recall us doing this before. That we would take on permitting for private property. Can anybody identify whether this has happened before?
Well, so the reason the Sewer Division would take on the permitting is, is the Sewer Division is, is doing the design. So as part of the design, the Sewer Division is taking on a base survey, is taking on geotechnical borings, and is taking on a wetland survey to identify if there are any wetlands along the existing sanitary sewer or along the layout of the proposed sanitary sewer lateral.
Then I guess the answer to the question is no.
Correct. This is, this is a unique agreement. You know, the, the impetus for this was the Sewer Division identified a large source of inflow and infiltration into the sanitary sewer collection and treatment system. We took a business approach, quite frankly, used a return on the investment, approached Gaylord, worked with Gaylord, and said, how can we both parties work together to remedy this issue? So the short answer to your question is, is we are working on private property. This, the inland wetlands and water course permit is a two-page application. We will be happy to work with Gaylord Hospital in preparing it, but it's a double signature. The Sewer Division signs as the applicant, Gaylord signs as the owner. But this is a unique, yes, this is, this is completely a one-off project.
Well, it, it isn't, I mean, this town hopefully will exist well after we're around. And it's not a, it's a one-off project for this. It's not necessarily a one-off precedent.
Okay.
That's the problem. So why, I mean, with the reimbursement and all of that that's already in here, why do we create this new precedent? What is it necessary? Because I, one of my problems is, you know, with licensing and permitting, there's checks and balances, right? You have certain regulations that have to be conformed with, and a private property owner goes to government and says, okay, we have complied, yada, yada, uh, please sign off. But here, when government that's signing off is the same one that's having to show conformance, you lose that checks and balances. That's a concern, because it's private property, it's not public property. So, I mean, what's to stop someone else from saying, well, you gave it to, you did it for those guys, why can't you do it for me? And that's, that's a concern.
Can I, can I just?
Yeah, sure.
Offer, so there's nothing unprecedented about the design professionals being the ones who present the application to whoever it is that was issuing the permit. There's nothing unique about that. It's, it's, this circumstance may be unique, but Gaylord isn't gonna sit in front of the wetlands and answer design questions. They're designing it, and they're the ones that are going to be able to answer the questions. So that's really what we're talking about here. You have the, the owner's signature goes on it. The design professionals are the ones who are going to make the presentation and answer all the questions. So, you know, that part of it, that setup is not unique. I mean, we've had applications for the town before where we've hired professionals to do the design work. They're the ones who show up for, to answer the questions, whether it be planning and zoning wetlands. That's what they're, that's, they're the people to do that. So, I mean, I appreciate that the, the circumstance is unique and, and could it happen again? Yes, with a different, um, property owner. But, I mean, this is, at this point in time, a very unique circumstance.
The other unique aspect is the amount, the gallonage that is at issue in terms of the inflow infiltration. It's a serious, it's a major quantity. And, and the whole purpose of inflow infiltration, for those who may not be familiar with it, is to allow our current sewer treatment plant to continue to operate and not have to be expanding it because of the amount of, in storm flows, the amount of gallonage that we receive at the plant. The best way to do that at this point is to reduce the inflow and infiltration. Hence, the whole adoption of this program to, in the public interest, allow us to responsibly handle the waste, the polluted water, and avoid the multi-million dollar expenditures of dealing with a treatment plant.
All right, just to be clear, I am not against the project. I understand there is value, and we spent all a lot of meetings talking about I and I. Uh, many, many meetings. So I understand, you know, it's, it's the permitting that's the issue. And, you know, the, the relationship, Janice, that you talk about, I would have no problem with. Both parties walking hand in hand, coming to the table, saying, this is our project. We're working together with the town, answer questions. But that isn't what this says. This says, "Wallingford shall be responsible for obtaining any applicable permit." It doesn't say they shall cooperate, doesn't say anything about that. So if inland wetlands, let's just say, disapproves, whatever's put together, the obligation is on government to then do whatever they can to get, get this through. So that's the problem here, from my perspective. Why the five hundred thousand? Where did that number come? I know there's an estimate of four ninety-one, but estimates, you know, whatever. How did we get to five hundred thousand?
Four ninety-one rounded up? I, I.
And the four ninety-one includes a contingency.
Ten percent is usually the standard, so, um, you know.
Wait, hold on.
Yeah.
You know, I've got the paperwork. So we have an estimate with twenty-one line items. So the estimate was developed. So the estimate was developed based on the preliminary layout that we have in the Engineering Section as well as recent bid prices for sanitary sewer and lateral replacement projects. We track all that. And so then, and so we actually projected that forward to July 1, 2024. So the 491, 532.65. I know the mayor and I had a conversation the other day about pennies. So 491, 532.65, and then we rounded forward to 500,000.
So the reason why that jumps off the page at me is I didn't know this was going on. And it was two months ago, we gave Gaylord $500,000 for redoing their facility. So I wish I had known that this was going on at that time. You know, so we've just given them 500,000. It's, it's, I think it's in the same area. They're talking about redoing things over there. So, I mean, on paper, I guess we're paying for the entire project. We're doing all the permitting. I understand it's almost $6 million worth of INI that we're getting rid of, but.
Well, so, so if you, if you read the agreement, you know, we went, it's, it's $500,000, up to $500,000, the Sewer Division and Gaylord Hospital are each responsible for 50/50. So it's a 50/50 split. So $250,000 for the Sewer Division, $250,000 for Gaylord. Anything over 500,000 is the full responsibility of Gaylord.
Well, not really. It says, and I'm looking at page three, if the lowest responsible bid is higher than $500,000, Wallingford will review the bid with Gaylord. If Gaylord does not agree in writing to fund the amount over 500,000, this agreement shall terminate. It doesn't say they're obligated. It doesn't say this project is going to get done. In the next paragraph, it deals with, this is still a problem and it's got to be rectified. But this agreement does not say that they.
Yeah, I apologize, I was.
Yes, it does say that.
Okay, where does it say that?
Okay, so that, that language in that paragraph is because, I forgot what Gaylord wanted language in that section, which we would not agree to. So basically, this is to, to them saying, if you don't agree to fund the project, our obligation, we're terminating this agreement. And then they're still liable to see that this, that the project goes forward because that's the INI requirement. So then you go on to page, I just had it here. So on the bottom of page four, you have direct costs incurred up to 500,000 or split 50/50. You then go on to the next page, the direct cost over 500,000, Gaylord is responsible for all direct costs over 500,000. They're also responsible for a 10% contingency of the awarded bid. So the awarded bid, if it's over 500,000, they're going to have to pay that difference. If it, I mean, part of this was built in so that if, you know, there's change orders or whatever that pushes it over that, they're responsible for it. But we'll do it, that part on a reimbursement basis. So I think that that's.
So, so explain the conflict then.
I don't think there is a conflict.
Okay, well, well, let's look at it again.
So here it is. If it's, if it hits, if the bids come in over 500,000, Gaylord doesn't want to like hear about it afterwards that we accepted a bid for 750. So we're, we're going to review it with them. If they balk at paying their share, we're going to just terminate. We're going to terminate the agreement. And then we're going to say to them, by the way, you still have to take the, the clean water out of your system and we're not obligated to give you anything to assist you in that project. We don't have to do the design. We don't have to do any of that. So this is what we're offering you.
Yeah, so.
Since, let's say if it came back a million. I mean, if you were Gaylord, you'd be saying, wait a minute, cancel the agreement. Maybe we can do it cheaper without you. I mean, I don't know.
But if it came in over 500,000.
Right.
And they signed off on being equally responsible for anything over 500,000, right? Which is one path, then that's what the deal is. So it isn't that what's on page five supersedes or eclipses. And the other path is that they don't agree. And it says the agreement shall, this agreement shall terminate.
The, the purpose of that language is for them to commit and to agree in writing that they're going to fund it over 500,000. We do not, we want that in writing prior to us signing any agreement with a contractor for the work to be done, which will then be committing the cost of the project. So I, I don't believe that they're inconsistent with each other.
Okay, so direct costs. On page five, because that's the 500,000, right? You have an obligation to pay one half of direct costs, right? That's basically it. But direct costs include permitting. So I thought we were doing the permitting.
Well, if the Sewer Division incurs an expense preparing the permitting, AKA the wetland soil scientist to map the wetlands, that would be a direct cost, directly rolled forward into the permitting.
But I'm looking at page five, D. It doesn't say preparation for permitting, it just says permitting. So on one hand, we're saying that we are responsible for permitting, but on the other hand, they're responsible for one half of the direct costs, which includes permitting, right? Am I, am I reading?
Oh, but their permits can cost money. So there is a cost to that.
Okay, but.
They're doing the work, but if there's, if there's the, I mean, I do believe we pay a fee for the permitting of wetlands, do we not?
But it clearly says Wallingford shall be responsible for obtaining.
Right, that's doing, that's doing the work.
Obtaining a permit includes paying a fee.
Not if the agreement says that the direct cost includes permitting. It's the cost of it, not the work of it.
So.
So if, if engineering charges a fee, it's on that. That's part of a direct cost.
It doesn't say that though. It doesn't say except for direct, it doesn't say for, except for permitting fees, Wallingford shall be responsible. It says Wallingford shall be responsible for obtaining any applicable permit.
But D says direct costs are defined as permitting cost. It's cost.
Okay, assuming that something gets approved here, who's doing the work?
So the Water and Sewer Engineering Section is preparing the design drawings and the specifications.
Who's actually going on the property and doing the work?
Our staff.
Okay, so you already have easements in place?
Well, it's all Gaylord property until you meet town of, a small slice of town of Wallingford property at Harnish Lane.
Is the town of Wallingford going to be walking onto or doing any work on Gaylord property? I think the answer is yes.
It is, but I don't.
And there are already easements in place?
I don't, easements for us to work on the property or permission to work on the.
Yeah, I've been involved in, with the Electric Division. You require easements.
Well, we require easements for our facilities. This pipe will be Gaylord's pipe.
Okay, so you have permission without an easement to go onto the property to dig and do all that stuff, to install this pipe?
We've talked to Gaylord, yes.
We have an agreement. This is the, we don't need an easement. We're not going to own the facility. What are you talking, why, why are you looking at me like this? We have an agreement to, to do the project. You think I, we need an easement on top of that?
No, I think it just, maybe, maybe I can help, maybe I can help. We are, we are not taking an easement, which will then have a utility easement across the property. This will be Gaylord's lateral. So there is not an easement that will continue on where we can go in and, and be working on our facility on their property. No, it, it will be their lateral. So there's no easement for that purpose. The agreement takes the place of a construction easement, I suppose.
Yes, what are we doing?
The only type of easement that might be necessary would be a construction easement and, and this, this contract covers that.
Janice, in the Auger Road case, the Auger Road case that we had with Cortez, there was an agreement with the Electric Division to go in and put in the electric line. The Law Department required an easement, even though they weren't going to, it wasn't a maintenance easement, right?
But wasn't the line owned by the Electric Division?
I believe it was, but you required.
Okay, but that's why, that's why we had to have that.
Well, you were installing the line. You wanted, you wanted.
Okay, it was your, you have a better memory of the case.
You wanted an easement to be able to go onto my client's property.
No, they weren't separate easements. There was an easement so that the power.
Yeah, because you were involved too.
Be there.
Yeah, so how is this?
And it wasn't like, you know, here's, I don't remember what the numbers were, but let's say the easement was 20 feet wide. It wasn't 70 feet during construction and then 20 feet when we're done with that. It's just, we have an easement for the power line to be there.
Mr. Henderson, the microphone's not picking you up. Thank you.
Do I have to repeat all that?
No.
Thank you.
So I'm just trying to bring the two together because in that particular case, that was the Electric Division had a contract to install and, and easement was wanted to go onto the property.
So that the facilities of the Electric Division could be there and remain there.
Yes, well, remain there for the.
These facilities aren't going to be the Sewer Division's.
Oh, okay, the actual, like, the transformer, the lines.
The poles, the wires, et cetera. Those are the, that's Electric Division's things that are still sitting out there right now. We need an easement to be on that land.
So we don't require a temporary easement, nothing like that, just this.
No, we don't need an easement for this.
The property owner agrees for us to do the, see to the construction. The contractor we would select and they would okay. Don't see the need for an easement to also allow the contractor that we selected and they okayed to go do the work on their property.
You know, on page six, paragraph eight, Wallingford shall have unlimited access to existing and proposed new sanitary sewer laterals located on Gaylord's property. We then have a one-year.
Where are you on page six?
Very bottom. Was it printed out differently than you did? And then we have a one-year, right, to check out the, the lateral for, it's called a maintenance period. They do that on their, the work that they have done by contractors to ensure. But, but because, you know, because it's not going to be something that's going to be permanently given to the town, and that's the circumstance that I think you're really thinking of, is where we would take an easement. So I don't believe we need an easement in this case. I'm, I'm sure that they would give us a, one if we felt we legally needed one, but I don't, I don't believe we need one.
Okay, well, I guess number eight would suffice for the, in a temporary basis, permission to have access. So I, you know, I guess at the end of the day, what I'm concerned about is this potentially dangerous precedent of being responsible for the permitting. Is there any way we can do this without that?
And so the alternative would make, make Gaylord. So we, so in that scenario, the Engineering Section would prepare the plans, prepare the specification and then hand them to Gaylord and then have to walk them through filling out the inland wetlands and water course application? So if we have time, should we quickly go through what the IWWC permit application is? Because.
No, I haven't seen it. I mean, there's no.
It's two pages. It's, it's, most of these questions have already been answered in our run-up to the PUC as well as tonight's meeting. Name, name of applicant, interest, owner of property, geographical location, total area of wetlands, total area of wetlands to be altered. We'll get that from the soil scientist. Describe the land in sufficient detail to allow the identification of inland wetlands and water courses, a computation of the area of wetland or water course disturbance, soil type and vegetation. That comes in the standard soil scientist report. Excuse me. Item G, describe their proposed activity, its purposes and intended use, area of wetland to be altered, amounts and types of fill, structures and construction activities. That is included in the, in our descriptive of the agreement as well as the plans and specifications. Item H, describe all alternatives considered and why this proposal to alter wetlands was chosen. We'll basically go with gravity and geography on that one. A site plan showing existing and proposed conditions and two signatures. So I understand your concern about setting a precedent, but the time, effort and energy would be greater to pass this on to Gaylord Hospital than it would be to have in-house staff complete this application.
Yeah, it's just the, it's the precedent. And they, they're a big facility, a lot of smart people over there. So, you know, if it was up to me, I mean, the commission is a three-personed body. When I'm reviewing minutes and I see that one-third of the commission was not accepting of this agreement, I'm a little concerned. So, you know, I would have it done differently. That's all I have at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So Attorney Small, I seem to remember that we did work on a dam that might have been on, partially on private property or might have altered water flow on private property. And I seem to recall that the town might have presented the permits to the, the land use boards. Am I misremembering that?
Yeah, I think they did. And also I think we did, we got some permanent easements out of that. Maybe actually we bought some land. Yeah, yeah.
West Dayton Hill?
Yeah.
Well, we acquired land from one of the property owners in order to have a property that would allow the reconstruction of the dam. We, we actually, we owned the impoundment, but in, in my view, we did not own the structure. However, DEP was pushing for something to happen. I mean, it's, it's very convoluted, but it was not a case of us, it was not a case, it doesn't appear, given what DEP was saying, that we were working on private property.
Right, but my recollection is that I, I thought the town applied for the, the land use permits for the project. And I don't think we had, yeah, and I don't think we had completed the transfer of the land before we applied for the land use permits. But I'm not certain about that. It was a while ago. Point is, we've done something like this before. Counselor Testet.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. The fact that this is before us, it just gave me the desire to understand the project a little bit more, just to find it interesting. It appears to me that this is, I mean, you've gone to great lengths to come to this agreement because this is a really large-scale version of the reimbursement program that we have ongoing to prevent the inflow of water into the sanitary system. It's such a large project, so you're addressing this a little differently and that's fine. I also was wondering what might be the incentive for you to be investing into the project? So what is it, from a technical point of view? This is not really a diversion, right? This is because there's a line going, but it's being, there's groundwater infiltrating this line to some ridiculous amount. So it's not like you're diverting, so it's not like we're diverting groundwater that is going into the sanitary line like a lot of homeowners do. And divert. is going into the sanitary line like a lot of homeowners do, and diverting it into the stormwater system. It's not a case of diversion. Secondly, it sounds to me like we're replacing a pipe, basically has a whole bunch of holes in it, with a new pipe to stop the inflow.
Correct.
So they're still going to have the sanitary line, but it now will not, it will no longer be filling with millions of gallons of groundwater, which is the real culprit here.
Correct.
I'm on fire. Good thing there's a lot of water. Last question, and this made me think that maybe this was the incentive for you to be involved. Why the diversion, oh, bad word, why the change to Harnish from Ridgeon?
So...
Was that, was that something that you wished for that makes it better for you in some way?
So, correct, so when you look back, when the, when it was originally put in, I believe it was 1955, it was...
Right.
Made active in January of 1956, Harnish did not exist at that point.
Okay.
So Ridgeon was where the sanit-, closest sanitary sewer collection point is. If you look at our sanitary sewer collection system, further down Ridgeon, there is a pinch point. When we now move the lateral over to Harnish, that pinch point goes away. Right now, Gaylord Hospital is constrained as to how much more development they can do because there is not the capacity in the sanitary sewer collection system. This will relieve that capacity issue and allow Gaylord future expansion, and from the water and sewer perspective, possibly greater water sales and possibly greater sewer usage.
Thank you. So that, there's an incentive there, that this is more favorable, that the, the construction of the new line does create a more favorable situation for the, for your division?
Correct.
For the town as a whole?
Correct, there is a pinch point further down from Ridgeon.
Okay, and that to me seems somewhat of, you know, more justification for us investing in this project. Aside from us already agreeing to do this type of share, cost sharing, if you will, for everybody, when we require them to, to stop pumping groundwater into the sanitary system. So that, that, that helps my understanding and reinforces my support, and I am all set. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you. From my perspective, this is not a government, you guys are an enterprise. You function and live differently in the world, the sewer department, the water department, the Electric Division. The people are the shareholders, you're the stewards. Neil, you're amazing, Rick, you're cool too. I applaud you for the hard work and thinking out of the box. This is clearly a very unique situation. The world is not black and white, so I appreciate the living and navigating the gray to really kind of work this out and, and just, and get what needs to be done, done. And even if there is a little give, I think the outcome, the, the benefit in the end is in our favor, and I think it's just good for the whole community, so, thank you.
I don't see any other hands on the council, any questions or comments from the public. There being none, there is no action on this item, there's no motion pending. And, gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
On to item six, to hold a public hearing to consider an act on a fair rent commission ordinance. All right. The fair rent commission ordinance was before the council several months ago, it went back to the ordinance committee after the last ordinance committee meeting, it was returned to the council. Are there any questions or comments from the public as I have opened the public hearing to consider an act on the fair rent commission ordinance? Mr. Reynolds.
Jesse Reynolds, Old Durham Road. I had a question. In the, in the way that it was originally kind of proposed, the seasonal housing bit is allowable to be, you know, sort of not considered as part of this, but I'm curious to know why the line about local, state, and federal government or Wallingford Housing Authority properties don't get included in this. And I'm, if you could explain, or if somebody, I, it, it, the, the way that the, was sort of tossed to you all to create the ordinance was like, you know, everything including mobile homes and so forth is, is in play here except seasonal housing, but you've added the state, federal, and Wallingford Housing Authority to this, so why don't people who live in those buildings need to have access to this commission?
The, the rent that's paid with, at the Housing Authority is a formula established, I believe, by federal law, so I didn't believe that the, this commit, this committee would be the one responsible for tampering, tinkering with that when it's established by a set formula.
Well, I understand that point, but like, the, what's written in here is also if people have issues with where they live, so like, if I'm paying, I don't know if it's a formula or whatever, but if I'm paying rent, and let's just say hypothetically, like, I live in the Housing Authority and I'm in a wheelchair, and this is kind of based on a real story, but in certain units in the Housing Authority, you're not allowed to have a ramp on your back door, so you're more or less instructed to try to get out of a window if there's a fire, if you cannot access your front door. If a tenant had a problem as such, they could come to a fair rent commission and say, I pay X amount of dollars, be it based on a formula or whatever, but they would also say that the conditions of my home don't meet the standards in which I'm supposed to be living in, and that is part of it. It's not just the money that you pay, it's what you're getting for your money, so I don't, I guess I understand why you wouldn't want to say that the rent was unfair, but someone could feasibly come to you and say, I don't want to pay any rent at all because of the conditions that I live in, and that's also part of what this covers. So it's, I'm, I was just, that's my main concern here.
Thank you. Anyone else? Since there's no further public comment, I close the public hearing and will entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion on the motion. Counselor Tata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so we've discussed this several times already, I just wanted to explain my potential vote. I'm against this philosophically, I don't think, you know, I've thought long and hard about this during ordinance committee and in our discussions. I just feel that whenever the government inserts itself into the free market, it never ends well, and we are being told and mandated by the state to approve an ordinance that does that. You know, I thought about it, and, you know, what are the consequences if we don't do it, and we don't really know, you know, we, we kind of infer that the state may try to hold back money from us in, in some other way, but we really don't know what would happen. Just because the state does something that I think is wrong for our community, I don't necessarily want my name to be in support of something that I think is not good for our community. And then, in addition to Mr. Reynolds' comments, I, I think I brought that up when we first talked about this, the fact that the government requires this for the private rental business, for lack of a better term, but doesn't hold itself to that, that same standard, I think is almost appalling. So, so the government, when it acts as a landlord, does not hold itself to the same standards that it's requiring of our other landlords in town, and I, I'm completely against that as well, so I do not think I will be supporting this, I just wanted to state my reasons why. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just procedurally, when this came before the council previously, there was, I think, just a simple quorum here, it didn't pass, went back to the ordinance committee, I did in the interim, asked for a copy of the document in Word, I did spend a lot of time making many proposed changes, I know Janice addressed, I think, all of my proposed changes, some of which I think she said made sense, but nonetheless, when it got to the ordinance committee, all of my proposed changes were rejected, so we are here tonight with the original language. One of my proposed changes was to deal with the concern, you know, the rules for thee but not for thee is something that I think this country was founded on getting away from. So, I do respect the comment Mr. Reynolds made, that one can make a complaint under this for things other than rent, and certainly if we took the time to work on this language, we could say, except for rent, with regard to the Housing Authority, we could write that in here. Another concern that I had brought up is, you know, sometimes we get to the, there's claims of what's known as an ultra Veras Act. One could make a claim that perhaps individuals that are appointed to this body are not appropriately on the body. The ordinance says, members shall be resident electors of the town of Wallingford, and there shall be one landlord and one tenant. I had proposed that it say, at least, that way it wasn't confined, because certainly if you have two landlords and one tenant, somebody could possibly make the claim that it only calls for one of each. That's the reason why we have an ordinance committee, is to work through those things, but unfortunately, all my changes were rejected, so I intend to vote no upon what is before us. You know, what I've heard is, well, we can deal with the problems, and we can redo it in the future. The problem is, is that when you attack the private sector, what does it say to landlords out there? Landlords provide a needed service. I think the Housing Authority here in Wallingford is the largest renter of residential properties of, of anyone, single entity, and when you say to private entity, you know, you have to come under the confines of this, but we don't, you think people are going to be more apt to become landlords? To take that two-family house and turn it into, or keep it as a two-family, or make it a one-family? And that diminishes housing. So, it's through policies and processes, I understand that we have to do something here. There are certainly changes that can be made to this language, I still think we have a, there's a concern about the concurrent jurisdiction and things like that. We already have a housing complaint because, you know, somebody's unit is not up to, up to speed, and an action's been brought to the Nahanaven Housing Corps, enforcement action, and, you know, the tenant doesn't feel like they're getting a fair shake down there, or whatever, that the landlord's being given too much time to, to remediate, and they bring an action under this. You have different rulings. That's a problem. Part of that problem is inherent in the underlying statute, I will recognize that. So there are certain confines that we have to agree with. We should be working together on language as best for our community to say to potential landlords, you're welcome in our community. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Carmody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just want to remind everyone what a, what a fair rent commission is. It is a municipal board with the primary power to prevent rental charges in residential housing that according to state statute are quote, "so excessive with due regard to all the circumstances as to be harsh and unconscionable." I said this the last time this came before us, this isn't a government handout, and it will also not be tying the hands of landlords from charging market rate rents. What this does is it creates a fair process to protect individual renters from being charged excessively. And just so you know, 25 Connecticut towns already had fair commission ordinances on the books, most going back at least 30 years. Some of those towns who already had these commissions include Glastonbury, Newington, Windsor, Weathersfield, Farmington, Simsberry, Rocky Hill, and, and the list goes on. The whole purpose of this is to protect those being taken advantage of. And this council decided it was okay to delay for months, putting in protections for some of the most vulnerable members of our community. I think that was improper and unacceptable. I supported this the first time it came around, and I support it again tonight, and it, hopefully, it'll pass this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Janice, thank you for doing the best you could with, with all the work and the regulations and everything from the state, and putting up with everybody. Of course, it's hard to be told by the state to, to do something and then do it, but it's a law, and there are different ways to handle not, not having that be a law. Unfortunately, this is one that we should have, and for all the reasons that Counselor Carmody stated. I, I'll, I'm supporting this again tonight like I did the last time, for the same, you know, same type of reason, when the state decided that we had to close for Martin Luther King Day, we didn't say, we don't like the state telling us what to do, we're going to be open anyway, you know, we did it. And I think that there is a mechanism in Hartford to, to get things done and accomplished, and there is a mechanism here, and I, I don't want to get distracted too badly by the fact that there, there could be good that comes out of this, because of what the, what the topic happens to be. On a, kind of a separate note, the, the Housing Authority thing hasn't bothered me, and, and maybe it's because I, I don't understand how it works, but I, I understood that the Housing Authority kind of is serving in its own role as this fair rent commission would. And if there's a problem with the Housing Authority rental, or an issue with the building, like, the tenants can go to the Housing Authority, I mean, there's administrative, you know, staff, and there's an authority of residents that kind of can, they can appeal to, to handle issues, right? Not the rent part, not the rent part.
Right, but if they're not, I mean, if there, if there's some evidence that they're not acting properly, I give that some consideration, but in terms of rent, you know, I mean, nobody's, they're not charging market rent, so in terms of this whole idea that, well, you know, they should apply to them, well, on the fair, on the rent, they, they're not, it's not market rent, it's based upon...
Right, that's, that's a separate calculation, so...
But the issue of, you know, if they do have a process, but if there's some flaws in that, you know, then that's something to give some consideration to.
Maybe I misunderstood, but everyone's aware the Wallingford Housing Authority is not Wallingford Town Government.
No.
They're a quasi-state agency.
Right. But there is a, there's a body that, that the people that live there can go to, to talk about if, right, if there's an issue. I know the rent thing is separate because that is controlled, so, all right, thanks, that's it.
Counselor Fishbein.
So technically, in the arrangement between the Housing Authority and tenants, Housing Authority is actually the landlord. Housing Authority is made up of individuals appointed by this body as well as a tenant commissioner, which is selected by the tenants there, I believe there's an election on a biannual basis. So they are essentially the landlord, but the problem becomes, and I, I have no, you know, if the only reason that this is for is for excessive increase in rent, that's one thing, but it isn't, so please don't get distracted by that, because on page four, it talks about a complaint that alleges housing conditions that violate a housing, health, building, or other code or statute. That's not the rent, that is a housing condition. And some of us that were up here back in 2009, 2010 will remember the many complaints we were getting from residents in the Housing Authority about conditions. Essentially, what happened is all of the commissioners went away, so, you know, that, they are not, yes, they are in effect, you can go to their meetings and complain about something not getting fixed, but if they don't do it, it isn't the same, and that's the distinction here. What we're creating is the ability for someone to complain about housing, health, building conditions, but only in the private sector. So I just want that to be clear. But I had a question for Janice, I'm trying to figure out, if I sign a lease today for $2,000 a month, can I go to the commission tomorrow and make a complaint for excessive rent?
You're not supposed to be able to do that. You're not supposed to be able to do that, because you, you know, at the time you agreed to pay that rent, you weren't a tenant at that time. And this, the main purpose of this ordinance, although, you know, that was a question that I raised at a webinar about this, is because it doesn't explicitly say that, but at the time you were into, into an agreement to pay the rent, you're not a tenant, so you're making the free decision to do that. So when you, but when you're an existing tenant, and you're paying, you know, $1,000 a month, and your landlord says, "By the way, it's, it's $3,000 next week," or something, whether you're there by tenancy or by a lease, that's the situation that the ordinance is supposed to capture.
So can you just point me to where we have addressed that concern?
It doesn't specifically say that, it doesn't specifically say that in the statute, but when, you know, it's, you're not a tenant at that point that you agreed to pay that rent, that was a decision that you made. This is really about people who are then trapped in a, in a situation where they can't pay primarily it's an increase. But I don't disagree with you, it doesn't, the statutes don't explicitly say that, so it is a concern.
And let's just say that the tenant is unsuccessful on their first complaint of this, this claim. Is there some preclusion that they can file another claim within a week?
Well, they're doing the same thing?
Yes.
Well, I don't, I don't think we have any ordinance that says, that tells you, no, the commission shouldn't hear it again. I don't think the ordinance has to say that. The commission makes a ruling and says that it's not excessive rent, and then you come back the same week and make the same argument again?
Yes.
Is that, I don't think we need to say in the ordinance that that's not permitted.
So for the purposes of legislative intent, you're saying that we are barring someone from filing a successive complaint based upon a certain period of?
I'm not sure what you mean by legislative intent in this case, but certainly as a legal advisor to the commission, if it's going to be made, then I would tell them, you do not have to hear a subsequent complaint that was just made and you just ruled on.
So when the tenant, they would make a complaint from there to where? So let's just say it's six months. Six months later, they make the same complaint. Is there some preclusion on that in this language?
There is no preclusion in the ordinance, no.
Is there some bar to us having some sort of preclusion in the state statute? The state statute, I don't think says that we can't bar that.
Yeah, I think I, you know, we'd have to worry about, we'd have to figure out how to say it so that, you know, there could be some change of circumstance that justifies something six months later, I don't know. I would expect to advise any commission who's hearing the same facts that they just made, unless there is some significant event in between time, which is always a possibility, that they wouldn't have to hear it again.
But procedurally, how would one be able to show, you're not requiring them to say that, to state that significant event? You'd have to have the commission have a hearing, note that there is no significant event at the hearing, have them perhaps rule the same way. You, I don't think you'd have the ability to tell them on the papers to deny.
Well, I think that if somebody came back within, certainly within the same year and argued to the same thing, I think that in the application process, we'd look them to tell us what's different.
Certainly for a complaint, they don't have to say specifically the basis by which. All they have to say is, "My rent is excessive."
Well, we're going to create an, an application process, an application form, we are going to be looking for information.
Understood.
So if they say, you know, "In January, my rent is excessive, it's, it's $1,000 a month," it's denied by the commission, and they come back six months later and say, "My rent is excessive because it's $1,000 a month," it's the same circumstance, so.
We don't know the actual specifics until you have a hearing. And that's, you know, that's a due process sort of issue.
Yeah.
So I'm not aware of any portion of the statute that would bar us from not permitting, you know, at least three months or something like that.
Well, I didn't say that the statute does bar that, so.
Understood, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know what's funny, because you hear things like government interference in the private sector, which it is, right? But like, building codes are sort of like a government interference in the private sector as well. And we have a set of building codes to sort of establish, you know, safe building practices, right? So a tenant should have a reasonable expectation as to what their living condition should be, like refrigeration and, you know, proper heating and cooling, or, you know, clean conditions without like an infestation of vermin or anything. So I think that there's, you know, any act of the government is sort of like an intrusion into someone's, like, personal life. But in this case, I think we need to understand that there, there has to be like an agreed-upon standard as to what you would expect if you rented an apartment. So I don't think that this ordinance is going to solve all, every problem, you know, within the sphere of, of issues between tenants and landlords, but I think it's a, it's sort of a good starting point. I mean, ultimately, we're looking at a board of our friends and neighbors, right? This isn't, you know, we use the word government because it's sort of a fun way to talk about it, but these are, this is going to be appointed from people that we know that'll be on this board. Blight is an issue that we struggle with in town, you know, on the outside of, of properties. Can you imagine living in a condition where the blight was on the inside and you had no control over the place you lived? So I don't think that this is this onerous or this unreasonable. The state said we were supposed to have this done July 1, we couldn't get it done for whatever reason, and now here we are in October. So the law and order side of me says we're way beyond the deadline for when this should have been done. I mean, we can make any kind of tweak to it going forward that we, we need to. But I think to try to diagnose every potential hypothetical problem we're going to have now is a little silly, because this isn't the Constitution or the Magna Carta we're trying to write. This is an ordinance to deal with, you know, the difference between tenants and landlords. So I think we start here, if this is a problem, we alter the ordinance, which we can do in a couple of months, and then, you know, we fix it from there. So I think we need to kind of like calm down the rhetoric a little bit, and just kind of like look at what we're, what we're dealing with here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you. I would like to compliment my colleagues, Counselors Carmody and Marone, whose words made a lot of sense. Thank you, I agree with you both. I was thinking to myself, if we, if anybody in government tried to achieve the perfect, literally the perfect legislation, that we could foresee any potential, potential eventuality, and what if, we would never pass anything. But we have the ability to amend when necessary. But if we hold ourselves to that type of standard of it has to be perfect, we lose the benefit of, of this, of a commission like this that, and that was explained much more eloquently by Mr. Carmody than I could do. Having said that, I had not, I didn't have a problem with this last time, but I had not considered the point that Mr. Reynolds made. I think it made everybody's eyes go up a little bit, like, oh, wait a minute, yeah, I hadn't thought about that. Clearly, it almost seems to me it was a, it was almost a common sense, like addition to say, well, you know, rents are not really an issue in Housing Authority properties, as Attorney Small mentioned. But the rest of the, the ordinance that does provide potential recourse for tenants for other complaints, it appears to me that it, it, they should, it should be available to them. And I was just wondering if it was possible to make a very simple amendment to this, if other counselors say, eh, we better go back then. But, I mean, I was looking at the line under definitions, and it mentions any housing owned and operated by government or the Wallingford Housing Authority. Potentially, I'm not making this amendment now, but potentially could we simply add a phrase, "only as it pertains to matters of rent"? I mean, keeping it that simple. Allowing, you know, allowing the rest of the ordinance to be available to tenants of the Housing Authority. But should that be somewhere else, or not in the definition section?
Yeah, I think that.
Could we add a line somewhere?
I think that I would look at that too, because on the enforcement side, you know, there is an element of what you're paying for rent in relationship to that. So I think I'd want to read through it. So, you know, we could look to, I'll do the research on it and see what the process is to on the Housing Authority side, and I can report back to the council. But, you know, this is, this is by far not a perfect document. If any of you have looked at the various statutes that are involved, it's a complicated thing. And I tried to simplify this thing because I thought it was too complicated, and frankly, I couldn't do it. So I think we're going to see things in it that we're going to want to address, but we've got to get going on it. But I, you know, I'll take a look at it in that context and see if it's as simple as that. It may be as simple as that, but I just want to double check by reading it through.
I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to hold up the adoption of this, given how long it's taken us already, but if there's a general feeling that we be, we open to a revision any time to deal with that particular matter. I'd like to see that done, but I want to see this passed tonight. But I thank Mr. Reynolds for bringing up something that I think has a lot of value. Thank you.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I want to kind of express my agreement with a lot of what's been said up here already. I have a couple of questions, but really quickly, I want to outline something that Counselor Testa just said. You know, we, we, the last vote on this, there were four yes votes for it. We need five to do anything up here, and there were three of us that were absent for, for work and personal duties outside of being on council. So it was just unfortunate that there was a decent number of us that weren't here that night. I was one of those people that wasn't here that night. I would have supported it that night, and I support it now, under the discussion that's already been had, right? It's not a perfect document. There, there are things that have to be done to it, tweaked to it, added to it, maybe adjusted and changed. I do have a question, though. Attorney Small, you, you mentioned something about if somebody enters into a lease, like if, let's say the market rate is 1,700 for a particular size unit, and they go ahead and sign a $2,000 a month lease. Why can't they come back later and say that that's excessive? Maybe they didn't know what market rents were, maybe that, maybe they felt that was reasonable coming from Stanford, I don't know. But the lease requirement should not supersede what's permitted or allowed. I'm, I'm just curious why you believe that they wouldn't be able to come back and say, "I didn't know," after they entered a lease?
Well, because at the, at the time they were entering into it, they were willing to pay that amount of money. So it's, I mean, they, they could have walked away from that lease. I mean, the, the normal circumstance for a fair rent commission is when somebody's going for the increase. You know, there are cases where someone's had the same rent for like five years, and then all of a sudden goes skyrocket, which from the landlord's perspective makes sense because they didn't go up for five years. But it's not from the, before I even sign it, I, I have an opportunity to say, "I'm not going to rent this place." So that's, that's the circumstance. So when I attended a webinar on this subject with the lawyers who were responsible for pushing this through and help drafting it, you know, I raised that issue. I said, "Well, you're not talking about somebody who's, you know, if I'm just about to sign a lease, I can't just the next day go in and say it's too high." And their position was, "Well, no, because at the time you entered in, at the time the rent was established, technically one wasn't a tenant, you had the opportunity not to sign on." So here you have, if we're for the fair rent commission, you're talking about people who are tenants, and then the rent goes to a different model. It doesn't explicitly say that in the statutes, and it doesn't explicitly say that in the ordinance. But in that scenario, you don't have to sign. But if I'm a tenant, and I've been paying $1,000, and you now want $3,000 from me, then I'm, I'm like a trapped person, right? I'm, I'm in a housing situation, it's not worth $3,000, I've got nowhere else to go. That's the type of scenario, so.
Well, the, the reason for my question is, is, you know, I want to play the reverse now. We, we've got, we've got people that are in established leases right now that are paying, you know, not more than 10% for a late fee. So let's say that their lease is 1,300, and their late fee, if they're later than 10 days, is $130. That's in the lease that they signed six months ago, or maybe nine months ago, or whenever. If it's a two-year lease, it could have been a year ago. State of Connecticut pushed through a change that says, "You can't do that anymore, it's now $5 a day. And once it gets to 50 bucks, it's no more." You could be late consecutively at that point, month over month, and it's never going to be more than 50 bucks. They made it retroactive on every open lease out there. So I'm just curious how that plays, you know, again, the, part of the discussion up here has been, hey, let's try to get that balance between the landlord and the, and the renter. We don't want anybody to have too much leverage, but then I see stuff like that happen and go, where was the backwards protection for landlords who now have to deal with the fact that, you know, $5 a day to be a couple of days late is, is, is going to be leveraged by some people because they're stuck between a rock and a hard place, and you want to be sensitive to that. But at the same time, the landlord's got bills due, and I don't want to get into the arguments of, "Well, if you've got too many properties and you can't afford the mortgages, you shouldn't have them." There's still utilities that have to get paid, and taxes that have to get paid, and maintenance that's got to get done. So I'm, I'm looking for the balance for both sides. And so when we do something like this, and we create a fair rent commission, I, I want us to look at both sides so that we're not, we're not giving too much leverage to one side or the other, because it's supposed to be an equal representation. And I'm, and I am concerned with some of the languages, I, I feel like it needs to be tightened up.
Well, you know, one, when the state, when they pass that law, I mean, they could do that, right? Because as I tell you all the time, they're king. So they could pass a law and say that regardless of what your lease says, you can't charge more than that. But, you know, I don't, I, I'm not sure I would agree that there's a balance because, you know, as Mr. Carmody said, you know, the test on here for rent is excessive, it's unconscionable. Then that's beyond a balance. So that is, you know, that's not looking for there to be necessarily equal. It's just you can't be so severely taken advantage of and paying a ridiculous a rent, that you're, that's where you get your relief. So it's, it's, it's not going to be a simple process, I don't think. I think, you know, we are going to probably look to tweak this in, in different manners, but we've got to get going and see how it plays out. The statutes are a royal pain to, to go through and understand, and coordinate how they all interact with each other. I mean, it's, it's a painful process. But I think this is a good start, and I think, you know, even in terms of preparing and even training the commission, you know, we may, in our conversations, come up with different ideas or different problems with the language that's in here, and it may need to be addressed. So, but I think this is a, I think this is a decent starting point, and we need to, to get going and see how it plays out.
Well, that makes sense, I, and I appreciate it. I guess, like I said, for me, I'm, my, my concern is if, if we don't have enough of foundation to start with. It sounds to me like you're saying there's, there's a solid foundation.
Oh, I think so.
Okay, so I've got less concern about it. I would have, I would have been supporting it, supportive of it anyway because we're being mandated to do it.
Right.
But as long as we've got what you feel is a decent foundation, we can move from there, I'm comfortable.
I think it is a very decent foundation, and I think that, you know, I don't think we're going to be rewriting it. I think we may be tweaking it, but I think that overall, because you have this interplay of these various statutes, there's going to be something that has to, to be adjusted, but I think that this is a good foundation to get going on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out a few lines in here I just think are maybe important to note. Under Section 2 definitions, so we were talking about the Wallingford Housing Authority. It's not just the Wallingford Housing Authority. The carve-out for who this does not, who does not fall under this ordinance says the following are not included. Any housing owned and operated by local, state, or federal government, or the Wallingford Housing Authority. So there's not just a carve-out for the Wallingford Housing Authority, there's a carve-out for any government-owned property at all, local, state, or federal government. The next thing I wanted to point out, under Section 3 Powers of the Commission. Number 10. The commission may order a reduction of any harsh and unconscionable rent to an amount which is fair and equitable. Fair and equitable is a, I think maybe a, not a very specific term, and I'm wondering what would, how would they determine fair and equitable? And then you go down to Section 4, Determination of Excessive Rent. Number 8, they can take into account the amount of. Number 8, they can take into account the amount of taxes and overhead expenses, including debt services thereof for the subject property. So now they're going to look at, does the landlord have a mortgage? How much do they owe on the property? So if the landlord does not have a mortgage, then the landlord should be charging lower rent potentially? And number 10, they can also use towards their determination, the income of the petitioner and all listed tenants on the lease, and the availability of accommodations. So now we're taking into account, does the landlord own the property? Maybe the landlord has paid off the pro, I'm sorry, does the landlord owe money on the property? Has the landlord paid off the property, or do they have a mortgage? That somehow comes into the determination of a fair rent. And also the income of the, of the tenants now comes into play. I think, I think this oversteps, and when you get down to the details, such as the ones I just noted, I don't think this is just, let's, let's look at if somebody is charging over fair market rent. This goes much deeper than that. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, there being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allinson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Morone? Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Cervone?
Yes, motion passes. Onto Item 7, Discussion Action Regarding the Cost of Rebidding Community Pool. Mayor, we have more information.
Yes, I believe you, hopefully all were in receipt of a letter. We spoke with the, Kenny Michaels and I spoke with the architect who was involved in the design of the proposed new pool. And he pointed out that our current pool is not a pool at all. It's regarded as an impoundment, a pond, doesn't meet any of the requirements, one of which is a, a, an impervious bottom to the pool, which we know ours is not. It's batuminous, and it does leak. There are a number of things, so this is in addressing whether we really, without just putting out an RFP to ask for someone to fix, refurbish our existing pool, it, it can't be done. There has to be construction of a new pool there, otherwise it doesn't qualify as a public pool under the state guidelines and statutory authority.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mayor, why was it, it says that both you and Kenny Michaels contacted Mr. Vint, uh, Fortuna?
We talked to him on the telephone.
Okay, so has a legal opinion been issued about re, like refurbishing what's there?
Well, I, no, we haven't asked the Law Department to determine, but we spoke with an architect who's familiar with the standards. I, I certainly looked at the statutory language, as well as the guidelines for pools. And I, I, I would agree with what the architect said, that our current configuration does not qualify as a pool, a public pool under, under the statute and the appropriate guidelines.
So?
To try to refurbish what's there, it would require a design of a pool of 42,000 square feet. Whether it, whether, and I'm, and I'm told that the bathhouse would have to be three times its current size in order to meet the needs of, I believe it's 1,688 potential occupants, given the size. So there are, there are tremendous hurdles to overcome. We could ask someone to design a pool that would be 42,000 square feet, but I, I don't, I, I don't think it's a, it would be asking for a whole new design with a much larger pool, obviously.
So I don't recall the state ever bringing an injunction action against the existing pool. So am I to understand that it's because we didn't maintain the pool that you're taking the position? That we can't, like, resurface the pool? It appears that is your position.
It's interesting how you would arrive at that conclusion, given what I just said. But nonetheless, everyone hears what they want to hear. What I stated was that our current pool does not have an impervious surface. So all of that surface, the pool bottom would have to be changed from batuminous to concrete or some other, other impervious surface. So all of that, all new filtration, pumping, et cetera, all of the requirements would now have to accommodate that much larger pool. When the pool was, was renovated in, in the 90s, the state law allowed us to change the filtration system. They didn't mention that it's a pool, they didn't say anything other than we could, we could install a filtration system. Under their rules, as I understand it, it is not a public pool.
Does that mean it's not a public pool, so it's a private pool?
It, it's an impoundment, it's a pond, it does not meet public, public pool codes.
Okay, because the regulations, the regulation that you cite in your letter, it says, "No person shall construct a public pool." So if we're, like, rehabilitating the present, you're not constructing, right?
Well, or, or substantially alter.
I'll get to the next one, yeah, substantially alter. So nobody is proposing to substantially alter. They're, they're talking about taking the existing and, you know, putting in, rehabilitating the surface, right? That's not substantially altering. Or reconstruct, right? Those are the three things. So I'm trying to figure out how you get from that to a requirement that have a batuminous surface. Because it appears that the regulation that you cite, you know, if we had been doing this every year, and just like the pool looked awesome, and, you know, every year the, the bottom of the pool was, was glazed and, and whatever, you're telling me we couldn't continue to have the pool?
If all of our mechanicals still worked, I suppose we could limp along with it. But we are told the mechanicals do not work. So that means all of that work has to be done. Once you start work on it, you must meet public codes.
Okay, I, I, I still fail to see the disconnect. So if you alter the way water is fed into the pond, and let's just say the pond was beautiful and well-maintained, you still would need to change the pond? Is that what you're saying? I think the two things, I think the filtration is something different from the pool, right? This talks about batuminous surface, I mean, it doesn't say substantially altering the filter system.
Okay, let's look at, what, what is the purpose of the state law and the regulations? It's to provide safe swimming areas with water that is clean and pure, and so that people don't have to worry about diseases or, or any other ill effects. So you're saying the town could begin major change, alteration substantially changing what the pool is? And we would say that we're, you had no intention of meeting the public health code, but we'd be spending millions of dollars in the process? Don't you think that's, that's a very difficult stance to take?
That's, I'm trying to, changing the filtration system is a modification, right? It's, it's, that could be major, right? Just the filtration system, which would help the health standards. I'm just trying to, you're overlapping the two and saying, because you might do this, you know, you replace the motor on the filtration system, which is a major thing. I mean, I've seen the, the system out there, that we have to change the, the pond? I'm just trying to, I'm just going by your letter, and it just seems disconnected.
But what was concluded in the 90s was that we needed a state law to allow us to put in the filtration system. Okay, so now we'll be putting in a new filtration system. At the very least, we would not, need another state law change or authorization.
Can somebody, can somebody get us?
They would, they would, they would then say, okay, you can do that, you now have a state law to do it. But it would not be regarded as meeting the state health code.
Can somebody get us that state law? Because I did spend a little bit of time trying to find this.
I'm sorry, I did find it, I forgot to bring it downstairs, so.
You can email it.
Did I give you a copy? So I think that, I do have it, so I did find it. So basically, I believe the initial request was a broader exemption or permission to do more at the pool. And I think because the Health Department wasn't happy with the pool, that was all they would agree to. And that's what's in this, that was what was in the statute. So, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I will send that to, to you. But so the, the question really is, what would have to be done to the pool to use it? And what level of change or alteration is that? And unless it's something minor, I can't speak for the Public Health Department, but one would think that their position is going to be, you have to come in compliance with state law, which we're not.
Understood, I mean, from the beginning, we're just looking to get numbers.
Right, but you, so, I mean, in order to get number, and just play this thing out. So you would really, what you need is the, you would need some work done for the architect or whoever to identify all that would have to be done. And then somebody, which you have to pay for, and then you have to go to the state and get a reaction, right? Otherwise, you're spending a lot of money chasing something. So, you know, that's what you would have to do, I would think.
Understood, and we're just looking to get numbers for three or four years now. I got it, so that's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just a few things about the, the letter and questions in general. So first of all, I, I, I found it funny that we asked the guy that's going to have the, the potentially $9 million contract, what his opinion is if we don't go with his project. I, I don't know that was the right person to ask. Obviously, there's a, some bias in, in what that answer would be. So I, I don't like that that's where the answer came from, number one. Number two, and I, Counsel Fishbein touched on this, I would, I question the terms, "No person shall construct a public pool," or "substantially alter or reconstruct any public pool." I'm not sure how that's really defined. So I think if we're just fixing it, I, I'm not sure if that falls into those, those definitions. The next thing, I'm, I'm skeptical about these multimillion-dollar projects, particularly because we're currently embarking on a project, the new police station, which we were told would be $20 million. We told the taxpayers it would be $20 million, and now we're up to, I think, around 35 million. So obviously, I'm very hesitant to get involved in projects like this unless we are looking at every single possible option and trying to do it in as affordable a way as we possibly can. Lastly, I just want to point out with this, so we've, we've said repeatedly that the way we can find out if this is feasible or not is to issue an RFP. Because then you're going to have people who are knowledgeable about this, who know the laws, who know construction, who are pool construction experts, would come and they would issue an RFP. And if nobody answers the RFP, then we have a definitive answer that it's not possible. So they would come out, they would look at what we have, they could tour the facilities, and then they would decide if this is feasible or not, based on laws that they know about, based on permitting, based on construction. And then we would know, once and for all. And I just don't understand the opposition to the RFP, along with getting the information to rebid the new project. This council's voted on the RFP more than once. It's two or maybe three times we've voted for that. And yet our, our votes aren't being honored. And I'm, I just, I'm not sure why. I don't see what the harm is in, if we're going to rebid the new project, that we also at the same time issue that RFP. Then at least we have all of the information. If it's not possible, we put it to bed once and for all. If it is possible, then we have documents we can look at, and we can decide then what we want to do. But I think that's a, a big part of this that, that keeps getting brushed under the rug. I'm not, not sure why. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mayor? The, the language regarding "no person shall construct" is a direct quote from the Connecticut General Statutes that's cited in the letter. So that's exactly what the language is, it's not an interpretation. And it states just what it is. "No person shall construct a public pool," ultimately, unless it's in accordance with the specifications as contained in. So that's the get-go. So if we're going to put out an RFP that does not meet those specifications, I don't know how you write that RF, RFP, Request for Proposal. So we're asking someone to construct something for us that we know won't meet the public pool and, and standards? And what, what would they charge, what would the price be in order to do that? I, I, I don't know how to write an RFP like that.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Sure.
Thank you. I might, I'm not, I'm not questioning that the statute says that. I'm questioning the interpretation of that wording. So "no person shall construct a public pool," or "substantially alter or reconstruct." My, my question is to the interpretation of that language. So a renovation is not constructing. I mean, I know this happens a lot with, you know, maybe not pools, but with zoning and rent, rent, house renovations, or even commercial renovations, where if you have an older building, you're grandfathered into a lot. And as long as you're, it's not a complete teardown, a lot of the current codes do not need to be met because it's not a complete teardown, it's not a complete redo. So I'm not questioning that the statute says that, it certainly does. I'm just questioning the interpretation of that language. And again, if there's an RFP, and the experts know that, if they all say, well, you know, you can't do it because it doesn't fit the statute, then, then we have our answer. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm fairly confident that a multimillion-dollar re-renovation, re, re, re-whatever you want to put on it, would, would exceed, exceed what, what is even regarded as substantial here. I mean, we'd basically be restoring, rebuilding, replacing the entire pool. Its, its filtration system, we would need a bathhouse that's three times the size of the existing one. So all of that obviously means a major amount of money. I, I just don't believe the Health Department would look at it and say, oh, well, that's, that's not substantial. So I, I, again, I, I don't know how you write a spec, uh, specifications that would have any meaningful response to an RFP.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, again, the, the, making the bathhouse bigger, I don't know, I'm not convinced that that's required at this point. I think if you have a new, you know, if you were to build this pool at this size new, then yes, you would need to have a bigger bathhouse. But again, to just fix what we have, I don't know that we're going to be held to those same standards. And I just, I, I just don't like that we don't have a definitive answer on this before we go and spend millions and millions of dollars and completely rip out everything we have. And, and the other thing too is, the people like the design we have now. I mean, people love, they, they say it's like a beach, the kids can go on the edges, you know, the little kids are there, they're not swimming in water, they're, you know, on the edges, the parents like it. People love the design we have now. And we're not getting that with the new one, because like, like you, you say accurately, we can't. That's not, it's not the way you can build a pool anymore. I, I'm just not ready to throw in the towel yet on this until we know for sure that we have to remove what we currently have. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one final comment, just to, not to belabor, but the current occupancy of the pool, it's, it's 42,000 square feet, it's 1,688 people. is sixteen hundred eighty-eight people. Our bath has, does not come close to accommodating that. And that's the rules, you have to accommodate what the occupant load is. So that's why it would mean a much larger bathhouse were we to get into a major renovation of the existing pool.
Counselor Marone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'm going to, I think a lot of good points were raised, and I agree that we're sort of in a bizarre place right now. But I'm not sure why we would want to engage in any kind of an RFP or anything, you know, in sort of the waning days of the current administration. I think that it's worth exploring all these options, but I think this should all be part of a plan on, you know, what the next mayor is going to do with Wallingford. You know, as, I agree with Mr. Fishbein. We've talked about this for years, and now all of a sudden we get all this action, like in September and October, you know, in the, in sort of the end of the long reign. So I'm not, I'm not clear why we're even discussing this at this point. I think it's a little bit premature to make any, you know, we're going to saddle, potentially if we wanted to move forward now, we're going to saddle the next administration with some giant bill for something that they may not, you know, be a part of or may have other priorities. I just think it's short-sighted to even talk about this now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I see no hands on the council. Sir, microphone, name and address for the record, please.
Jerry Palmer, Center Street, East Center Street, Center Street, Wallingford. You really got to listen to the people. The people want that pool. The people have been wanting that pool for a long time. We've dragged our feet on that pool. Just the name of the community pool should be ringing bells right here in this chamber. I believe in the beginning, this is how many years ago this pool was made, was put in, it probably wasn't done right correctly in the beginning. This is why we have the problem. It's deteriorating. It was probably a wet pond at one time, correctly? Am I correct on that? Was it dried out thoroughly? Was it waiting, checked on the treatment of the concrete or whatever was poured? It probably wasn't done right in the beginning. So none of us are guilty here today about that one, right? So let's get whatever it needs. This town needs it. They are yelling about it. I've been out there campaigning. People know that I'm running. You got to listen to the voices. The economy, the way it is, a lot of people don't afford house. They can't afford a house. They can't afford a pool. And now they can't even afford the gas to go to the beach. They need that pool. Think about it. It's very important for this town and the people. Whatever it takes, get it done. It should have been done decades ago, you know? Or it should have been done right fifty years ago, sixty years ago, whenever they did it. Thank you for your time.
All right, I see no other hands. I don't see any action coming from the council. And we have no further business on our agenda. Moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed can stay.